Do I have a motion to approve? Again, then Lori Tillman make the motion. Steve seconds it. All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Lori Tillman make the motion. Lori Bass seconds it. All in favor? Dr. Spencer?
Okay, I just shared some things with you. And the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to just review our CSEP committee meeting we had that last Thursday. That is an MSEP six requirement that we do that every year. We redesign our CSEP and revise any goals that need to be revised and keep it an active living document. Um, that we are actually using and it is. So we had a committee, we had about twenty people here and we worked for about three hours and we came up with a revised CSEP. Which, um, I did share that with you. Got all the updates in there. Also shared the MSEP survey results with you. So every year we're also, um, required to do a climate and culture survey with staff, students grades four through twelve and our stakeholders. And, um, so I've shared those with you and I've shared the twenty-four, twenty-five ones. So you can kind of see those as a comparison. That was also part of our CSEP work was to look at those. I was happy with the results of those. Um, we made some improvements in some areas this year with, um, students and staff. And if the people who spend all day, every day in this building, five days a week, think we're doing a good job, then I think that we can say that we're doing what we need to be doing and we're continuing to get better at it. So, um, there are always areas in which we can improve and I've got those listed. I, I go through and I tally the top three of those every year, um, that are mentioned in remarks. And those are, uh, and then are also our strengths because we have a lot of strengths. Our APR came out, um, the first week of November. It was publicly, um, available. And I've shared several different APR documents. So we, we get a, um, a composite score. And we get one of those for the district and then one for each building. And then we get the supporting data that goes into that score. And we also get them in those for the district and one of those for each building. Um, I'm not going to go through those line by line, but as you can see, we did, we went from seventy-seven point seven percent composite score to seventy-five percent. That's not a significant drop. Um, we were down a little bit. But you, if you also notice, um, there were fewer points possible from last year to this year. There were a hundred and twenty performance points possible last year, only a hundred and four points possible this year. Those have changed every year. The year before that, there were a hundred and twenty-eight, the year before that, a hundred and twenty-four. So they, they kind of change the measure a little bit over the year. Um, I'm always happy with our continuous improvement score. We have, um, held at a fifty-nine out of sixty points the last two years. Continuous improvement are the things that we can control. We can turn our reported in on time every time when we do that. Um, it's, it's about, um, things like just making sure we're doing all of our required recording. Um, the only point that we have gotten dinged on for the last two years is our student attendance. And that's a little bit out of our control. We do encourage them to come to school. Um, Mrs. Burrows and I had that discussion early this year and she's, um, she sends letter at, letters out regularly. We got on that sheet, got on that very early this year. And I do believe that we are having better attendance. Um, the goal is ninety percent of our attendant, our, our students here ninety percent of the time. And the last year that we had the state recorded data on that is right now is twenty-three, twenty-four. And we were at about eighty-five percent of our students here ninety percent of the time. Um, that's not great, so we're working on that. It's also part of our CSEP. Um, but we're holding steady on continuous improvement performance. That's test scores, that's MAP and EOC, that's, um, ACT and [coughs] That's how many of our graduates who have gone through a CTE program are working or going to school in an area related to, um, what they, what they, the CTE program that they were involved in. Um, so there are lots of things that go into that performance score. And a lot of them have to do with student achievement. So, um, you know, we're always working, we're always working to raise our rigor and raise those test scores. Our teachers have that conversation every PD day we have. We have that conversation. Uh, finance, revenue expenditure report. Um, I do have some moving around to do of, of money. Don't, don't panic when you see the, um, the, the revenue. Our big state payment came in today, so it has not been posted.
The basic one?
Um, yes, it was a hundred and fifty-two thousand and change, so, um. So anyway, we've, and then we will start getting our, um, county tax money very next couple of months. So we'll, I don't know, those revenues will go up. I'm not terribly concerned in any of the expenditure areas. Um, like I said, there's some money that needs to be moved around. I know our buildings', um, expenditures are over. However, we have money in another buildings area that I will move when I do a budget amendment. Um, it's hard to predict whether we will, where, in which account we will need the most of that money. It depends on the types of projects you're doing and the cost of them as to which one of those they get coded to. So that's not unusual thing to have to move around. But, um, right now we're sitting at thirty-five percent, um, of our expenditures realized. So I'm not unhappy with that. We're almost halfway through there. Our CSEP, I did attach the revised CSEP. You have not heard that yet. Um, we just, we get a little tighter with our goals every year. Um, just some rewardings as far as how we're going to measure things and getting more specific as to how we're going to address achieving our goals. Um, I felt like that many did a really good job with that this year. And I thank my facilitators, um, Mrs. Burrows, Mrs. Lawless and Mrs. Keith all, all took an area. And, um, so we each worked through and improved our goals. And I always appreciate those people who have been here since the beginning because they, they started with those original goals. And they know the process and, and they're the good people to have. They're also at your table to kind of help guide everyone else through what that looks like, so. Um, I don't know that we added anything earth shattering. Like I said, we mostly just kind of refined our measurements and, and our action steps. We did, we added several action steps as far as things that, um, you know, we will do to try to achieve that goal. The goal is the main objective though. That's what we're working toward. And it's, the action steps are what we hope will get us to that goal. And there's always something that we try and it doesn't work very well. So we'll, we'll take that one out and keep looking. And it's all hidden, something has some questions.
Ms. Burrows?
Thank you. Our report tonight, we have lots of good things going on here at school. Um, I know we just talked about attendance percentage, um, and I did not get the attendance percentage from Ms. Melissa today. We were talking about it and I did not get that from her. Our discipline report is twenty-seven so far this year. I sent out one party letter and I did just send out attendance letters today from, um, elementary, middle school and high school. They'll go out in the mail, um, actually tomorrow morning. But I've sent out a total of twenty-seven attendance letters. Um, some of those letters are, um, the same students that got it the first time. Um, so we don't really have twenty-seven students. I have twenty-seven letters sent out. Um, reading wonders. We have Ms. Humphrey and Beth Efford here talk about reading wonders. This is the curriculum that we purchased at the beginning of the year for elementary.
Yes, and we saw on the already published one for designation, uh, when I kind of read it in the paper. We've just got some samples of what we're doing right now with, um, learning. We have some student copies of stuff that we're actually doing in first grade right now.
And we're on, we're in our second unit in the middle and I extended it. It's supposed to be one week, but I accidentally, because it's a little bit weird with Thanksgiving being here and spelling words kind of jumping up in difficulty. So this is kind of what we're doing right now in first grade.
And I just want to say thank you for ordering this because it's kind of God sent for me coming in after quite a break from the classroom. And I didn't have to worry about preparing anything. Everything I needed was right there, more than what I needed. Actually, it's just a lot of stuff. But, um, some of my favorite things that I use when I get to first grade at two is, um, the big books.
What would be the?
That big book, I do love that. And then retelling cards, to retell the story, uh, vocabulary cards. And interactive read aloud stories. Um, and then the, the reading writing companion that goes with all of it. So they're constantly writing as they're reading. And that has really made their, their writing improve so much.
And what's nice about them too is their word books. So as we read, they can go through and like, they can circle vocab words or they can circle certain phonics sounds while working on as we're reading. So it also helps them
I thought around so you can kind of look
Notice it.
That's a, a student has worked in that. I have masked out their names for privacy purposes, but you can see that it goes along with everything that they're reading, writing about it. And then small groups, we have decodable texts and level readers that we use. And the part I really like is also they have, um, especially because I was kind of freaking out with reading. So I have the worksheet that go along with it too, with everything we're doing. So you can pass them around and look, this is incredible what they're doing. They're writing sentences already, um, capitalization, punctuation, spacing already. We're not even, this is a year. Um, my glasses on, sorry. Okay, so this is, uh, that, I don't know. One's a practice book and then one is an assessment. So the practice book kind of gets them ready to their assessment?
I think this was the assessment.
Okay, so we do these and it kind of gets them ready for their assessment. And that is totally, they don't get any help. I read it out loud, they follow along, they do or die. And the first test was kind of, ooh, second one was like, ah! So they really caught on quickly, loved it. And just kind of give you an example of a student, first week of school, I was like, well, write your name and draw me a picture of something we just read. So scribbled, kind of looking a little bit like letters. Uh, that's something she did for me as well. So, um, not, she didn't have, uh, much practice with a pencil. And then here's what she wrote for her, uh, nonfiction text recording on bugs. You can actually read the sentences. So I'm really tickled. And here's a couple of more, um, nonfiction texts that they wrote, um, making a report on bugs. And these also were ones that came with very low writing skills. But I was pretty proud of their writing.
Definitely.
They can write.
So I think that the program, along with UFLI, I really like doing the UFLI with it.
Yeah, they line through well, remind the preaching boys.
Does go very well together. And I think it's really given them a great, uh, jumpstart in, in flying, starting to fly.
That's great.
Yeah, so I like it, I really do. And it'll be good for whoever steps in behind me. It's all there, follow the teacher's manual and have everything you need. It, I think it's a good program. Worth the money. I guess heart it was a lot, but I do like it.
And just walking around to their classrooms, I know like the vocab cards that she showed you, the teachers have all that pinned to their board depending on what week with, what vocab boards they have. So they're all doing everything together. So, you know, next year and the following year, the students are going to be used to that routine. They're going to know, oh yeah, those are the vocab cards. So, you know, that's what this is because it's the same year after year after year.
It's only going to get better and it kind of trickles, it's going to get, yeah. The ones just jumping in, it might, might be a little, oh, right now, but it's
After the first year, it's going to get better. It's, it's impressive, regardless.
Yes, especially when, you know, he's trying to learn how to hold a pencil when we come.
We love that process, really good process.
Yeah.
I think so. They work hard.
They do. But yeah, everything goes together. That's what I love is the decodable text for our small reading group, um, the guided, um, well, not guided, but the leveled readers. Every week is a new theme and the big book goes with it, the interactive read alouds, oh, shared reads.
I like how a lot of times they reflect that social studies or science topics too. Because like, we're going over maps right now, which I tied in with our Thanksgiving things and how they use maps and things to sail and it, the programs to get over here. And it just, it works well for using both more than one subject. So we can use social studies and
Science.
And science.
The bug.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I like how we covered those two topics.
Okay, any questions?
Do they get excited for the, to move on to the next lesson?
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Especially when they've got a new skill, like the phonics mind, we're working on, um, plural nouns right now. And so we're moving on to irregular plural nouns. So they're like, oh, so we don't just add an S? And they're like, oh, I wonder why that word did that or whatever, like child to children. Or we don't say childs, we say children and they get excited. They like to know that they're making progress too.
And I'm so glad you brought that up too, because in kindergarten, I've already taught them nouns and verbs.
Mm-hmm.
So the grammar's there too. It's like, wow.
It's got all the different
We like it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had a lot of events happening. We've had earthquake drills, parent teacher conferences, Padawan reading and parent meeting, Red ribbon week, um, excuse me, fall retakes, basketball pictures carnival, Veterans Day, CSEP meeting, and a T A that's like playmaster. Um, you know, all of our teachers are doing a wonderful job, but I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Visser. Um, he has done the play, carnival and the Veterans Day, like all within a week. Um, and he, as, and all three of them has went off without a hitch and they've just been amazing. Um, and he does not take class time to do this. He practiced the play with the speech and drama class, but other than that, I mean, it is, he works on this on his planned period before school and after school because he still teaches all day long. And he still has done everything, um, with these events and it's been great. Um, FFA National Convention, um, they had a great time on that. And congrats to Ms. White also. She earned her national FFA honorary American victory as well. Um, carnival, like I said, was, was beautiful. Congrats to all of our candidates in our new king, queen and prince and princess. Um, Veterans Day, um, we had twenty veterans there. Um, and NHS is, um, all of this group of students here is, is, is in NHS. And they helped us everything. They did the speeches, they handed out the flowers to our veterans. It was very nice. And then you try around and had the playmaster, the Alice in Wonderland adventures. It was, it was so cute. It was very, it was a very fun play to watch. They all did a great job. Um, our student activity report, um, in December NHS will be here. Uh, February and March is already signed up for, hopefully we'll get a few more as well. Uh, CTA report, provided baby shower for our third grade teacher. Um, and then collected, um, instead of card, it's a night to nurse Kathy during her recovery. Um, also nurses report, um, Katie Patterson Southern for Nurse Kathy, um, she's feeling better soon and will also be starting her treatment plan soon. Um, A D reports, we have, um, high school girls basketball and boys basketball season right around the corner. Um, they both get a jampering Monday night. Um, you know, both teams, very, very promising outlook on it. They've been working really hard. Um, the first home game is Friday at six o'clock, so come on out and support both teams. Um, we are doing theme nights for all of our home games. Um, so Friday night is, um, blackout night. So any students that come blacked out for the theme night will get in free to the game. Uh, compass report, uh, Ms. Keith, um, we did the A plus meeting in the fasted frenzy during parent teacher conferences. She completed a mental health training course. Um, so we'll be, so we will be able to present ourselves, um, for next year. Um, this year we're bringing in compass to complete our mental health training, um, for our freshmen and sophomores this year. Um, library report, um, there was a movie service that the library was using. We canceled that, we don't use it anymore. Um, our book fair, we use that through Skolaxic. We have over two thousand dollar credit with them. So Matholus is looking to order books for that. And then we've had a repair, um, twelve crown books so far. And upcoming events, these are all the events before we see you next time at our next board meeting. So it just kind of goes by really fast, but it's been good. And that's all that I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments? We'll move on to new and unfinished business. Take just a quick second to ruffle his bills and pull it through him. Question? Steve makes the motion, Darren seconds it, all in favor? Fun transfer?
I'm not sure if you should approve the fun transfer from the
Lori Tillman make the motion? Wendy seconds it, all in favor? Same fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board filing.
Oh, I need, and you have to make a motion.
Okay. Lori Tillman make the motion, Darren seconds it, all in favor? Board filing.
It is just our annual notice on who goes up for reelection and we, um, publish this notice in the paper, um, every consecutive weeks.
Lori Tillman make the motion? Wendy seconds it, all in favor?
Um, I, I realize that we've, we were busy this week. Um, it was crazy. Um, but we, so I realized that the revisions, um, and Mrs. Keith has, bless her heart, she was here until nine o'clock Thursday night working with the CSEP committee. And then Friday morning she was at hospital at six AM having knee surgery. So, um, she got her revisions to me later in the day. If you want some time with this, um, you're welcome to table it and approve it next month. Um, because it was late in the day when I finished up the revisions. I have not reshared it with the, the committee, um, yet. But, um, if you want to, if you're ready to approve it tonight, like I said, we didn't, we didn't make any great big changes to goals that would, that would be life shattering. Um, there's, there are a lot of just refinement and trying some new things for action steps. Um, just, just to see, you know, where, where can we improve and, and if they're going to work. And if not, we'll redesign it for next year and try it again. But we do, we try to get better.
Table work, you go over?
Yeah, I was there, so I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Yeah. Not a motion. Steve makes the motion, Lori Tillman seconds it, all in favor?
Has it been true or is it, uh, a
Um, no, we've, they've
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Desi contacted me a couple of months ago and they asked for a list of all of our buses by age and mileage and all of that good stuff. So I sent them that information. Um, because we have some buses that are two thousand and nine and older, we qualified for the Volkswagen, uh, grant, which gives schools based on age of buses and financial need as determined by, um, poverty level and pre-reduced lunch and all of those kinds of things. Um, and we have qualified for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bus grant. There is no match to it. There are, if, there are no catches to it. Um, they will give us up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward a brand new bus. It does have to be within, um, one calendar year of the current year, so it can't be any older than a twenty twenty-four. Um, and we do have to fully disable the bus that we are getting rid of. We can't sell it for somebody else to use. Um, we can, we can, um, junk it or we can, um, do what we did with our last one. And we can disable, we can let one moat disable it and then he uses the parts from our last one on some of our older buses that they're compatible with. And we've done quite a bit of that from the last bus that we, that we let him disable, so. So I did have Central States, that's who we purchased our, our last three buses from. I had them do us a quote, go and help with the specs on it, who told me what motor needed and all of that good stuff. Um, it's fully decked out. It does not have air conditioning. I don't know that air conditioning, i- it would be nice during August, um, for activity trips. Um, but you would have one bus, um, but, and, and four bus routes. So who gets the air conditioned bus? And air conditioned buses don't always, um, last very well on gravel roads. The, the dust gets inside the bus and, um, a lot of time, and, and the roads are so bumpy that, um, they, they just don't always pull together very well. They require a lot of repairs. Um, so that's, it does not have air conditioning, but it does have a full camera system. All new buses come with a backup camera now from a bus driver who hates to back up. I will tell you, that will be amazing. Um, and, uh, it has, but it does have the, the full set of cameras inside. It has a stop on camera. Um, it's, it, it's a very nice bus. It came in just under a hundred and fifty thousand, so the grant would fully cover it. And I would like your approval to go ahead and get that application in. It's due by December first. No downside to it if we go forward.
Lori Tillman make the motion, Lori Bass seconds it, all in favor?
Hey, let's get that done.
I've never been on a brand new bus before. I've never
I'm really excited. Who's going to drive it?
Um, well, we'll offer it to Bo because he has the oldest bus and the most mileage of all the route buses. And Bo may or may not want to drive it. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to have a throwdown with Bo and make him quit because I'm going to make him drive a new bus. So if he doesn't want to drive it, then we'll, we'll figure out what, where else we can put it into service. But, um, he, uh, he, he will have first dibs on it if he so chooses. Um, and he's been here for thirty-eight years and I think after thirty-eight years, anybody deserves to drive a new bus.
It says five-year bumper to bumper warranty. I like that.
And it is, um, the, like, the, it's, it's got the Cummins motor that is compatible And it is, um, the, like, the, it's, it's got the Cummins motor that is compatible with the ones that we already have. So Glenn's very familiar with it and Central has just been really good to work with. We did try to work with another bus company trying to save a little bit of money early, or I guess it was late last year and we just didn't have good luck. Um, the parts weren't as good a quality and, um, for the money we were trying to save that. We didn't get, and we didn't get very good service, um, the parts took a lot longer to get here. So they've been really good to work with.
Circle us.
Asking if I can get rid of the big fan. So down by our freezers is a monstrous fan and it has a big plywood case around it and it sticks way out from the wall. And I think that, I don't know, it hasn't been used since I've been here, um, but I think they used to use it in the gym maybe before we had air conditioning for graduation. You actually put ice in part of it and that helps it blow colder air. I've never seen it work a bit, that's what they tell me. Um, it's in the way, we asked Mrs. Uh, White if she would use it in the shop. She took it down there and she tried it, it's got some mechanical issues and they kind of tinkered around with it. But she ultimately decided it wasn't something that she wanted, that she felt was worth being a permanent fixture in the shop. So I would like to put it out, just take sealed bids on it for a couple of weeks and highest bidder comes and gets it and they have to come get it. So if that's okay, we'll put the money back in. I'm sure it goes in place, we're supposed to put that money and we'll figure that out. Yeah, there's a, there's a part of it when you get so fast, you have to put it back in there, but I moved this out.
Lori Timmons makes a motion? Lori Best saves it, all in favor?
So Gayla has continued the trip going through and, um, getting our board policy book updated and making sure that all of the mandatory policies have been board approved over the years. And she's literally going through the board minutes year by year and making sure that what we're supposed to have is, has been board approved. And then making sure that we also have a, a good paper copy of it. And these are all policies that, um, they're all mandatory policies for some reason, they, they got missed here and there for board approval. I think they're all prior to twenty nineteen, so we've done a better job recently with, um, keeping all of those up to date, but some of them go back several years, so. I don't know why, um, but they are all mandatory policies that we're supposed to implement and we can't find a record that we've approved them.
And some of them will say that they've been approved on a certain date and I looked and they were, they were not.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, they're not in the board minutes for that, for that particular board meeting, I think there's only one of those in there.
Can we do them all as a?
Yes, you will accept them.
Lori Timmons makes a motion, Wendy seconds it, all in favor? Student information.
Okay, you can help with this one too. So we have Infinite Campus, we, um, we used to have, it was called Tyler SIS for our student information system. We were not unhappy with that, we had it for years, every school I've worked with, that was a student information system they used. Um, it was fairly easy, well, then they, they did, they were shutting their program down. So we had, we just had a couple of years, I think actually this is the year that they're doing away with that. And, um, so they let us know that and we knew we were going to have to change, Infinite Campus actually bought them out. And, um, we did, we, we did our due diligence, we looked at student information systems, we looked at it, we looked at Power School, we looked at some others, but. One is, is prevalent, talked to some schools, we went to meetings and we settled on Infinite Campus because the way it was sold to us was. We bought Tyler SIS, it'll be an easy changeover, we'll help you. And it has not been, there is nothing easy about it, it's, um, it's clunky and hard to use, we don't get, I don't feel we get very good customer service. We struggle running reports, um, we get directed to videos that, that are long and you can't find what you need in them whenever we do ask for help. Am I saying anything wrong there?
No, no, it is not, it's not friendly.
It's, it's not user friendly and they're a national company and I think they try, they try to make their product fit fifty states. And every state has different reporting things that they require and where we get our upload that goes to Desi comes from this program. And we've really struggled with it particularly changing counselors because our counselor was the one initially trained in it. She went through hours of training and then, you know, we get a new counselor and we hired her kind of late in the year. And she, she has done a fantastic job, I will say that, of learning as she goes, but, um, it's just a lot. In the meantime, this year we were, um, introduced to a different student information system that some of the smaller schools are using. Uh, they only serve four states, they have an office in St. Louis. And they don't have as many bells and whistles, but we don't use all the bells and whistles with Infinite Campus anyway. We just need for it to do some basic things and to be able to look at a screen and say, okay, if I push these buttons, it's going to do these things. Without having to go through extensive training and we also need somebody who answers the phone when we call and ask for some help. So we have previewed, um, the one I don't need, um, Common Goal. And, um, Mrs. Burrows and I previewed it in, on our October PD day, I had invited them to come and speak to all of the conference superintendents. Um, a couple of them already use it, I think Barry Holman, James Howe, and Bunston maybe? Maybe all three of them. Um, they're all happy with it, we invited him to do another presentation with our teachers in November because. We're asking them, two years after we've changed, to, to change again and they were also happy with it. Some things that some of you who are parents will be glad to know it does, you can fill out your enrollment online. And we don't have to come up with the forms, that was, Infinite Campus had that capability, but we had to, we had to make our own forms. PDF fillable forms and then it was, that was an extra cost to add that feature, this comes with that. Um, it has, it has the capability to pay its lunch bills online, which will be, I like that. But, um, we will also have to see how that links with accounts and things like that, but, um, I don't know if they go through PayPal or, we'll have to get some more information on that. The annual fee is only a, it's only a hundred dollars less than Infinite Campus, we're not saving an immense amount of money. Um, but we do feel like we'll be getting a more user friendly product. Um, we do have to pay to change over because they will come and they will do all of the training that we need. We have to have training on the lunch part of it, um, we'll have to have tra- training on the data reporting, um, discipline, grading, things like that. Um, and that, that is a one-time fee of thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars. I wouldn't be asking if I didn't think it was worth it, um, and, and I do think we will be getting a more user friendly product, so.
When we had the meeting with him in November, um, they zoomed in and all the teachers were in here. And it was open, um, for, you know, discussions and questions, they would go over like the grade book and then the teachers would ask questions and they were able to answer their questions. And the teachers really liked that because there are certain things that they were looking for, like on how to communicate with parents, on parent emails. Um, the grade book, it will coincide, if you use Google Classroom, it will automatically upgrade or upload your grades from Google Classroom. So the teachers don't have to put in grades like two or three times, it's corresponding with that. Um, and they were very happy when we zoomed with them, the teachers laughed, it's like, I wish we would have done this two years ago. Or like, we didn't know this one existed. So, you know, the feedback I've gotten from the teachers and just that day that we met with them in that PD conference, it's just the size that we need for us.
What's their support like, do, like, can parents call anytime or do they have to go through the school?
I don't, I, I do not know the answer to that, but I can, I can ask them if, um, I, I don't, I don't know, I'll just have to ask. Um, parent support, there is a, a separate, so the parent app, there's a parent app, there's a staff app. So like, it, you know, what it's going to look like for Mrs. Burrows and I and, you know, the staff is going to be different than what I would see on the parent app. Um, some things that the parents are going to like, when you pull up one of your kids, if you have four kids in school here. You, all you have to do is click on a different name to pull up the other one. Um, you don't have to fight your way through, you know, every, every student that you have. And it's just, it's just a lot more user friendly as far as trying to find, I want to know my kid's attendance, I want to know the, the grades, I want to know the lunch bill. And it's just easier to find things.
And will it be loaded on the Chromebooks for people who don't necessarily have devices at home?
Should be, there should be, there's, there'll be a website link and then the students also will have access to it, so they can check their own grades.
And then also make sure we don't have to pay for support, that should be included.
That, that is included, that's, that's part of what you're paying for in your year of key, is that, yeah, that initial support is just training.
Steve makes a motion, Lori Timmons saves it, all in favor? Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Lori Timmons makes a motion, Wendy saves it, all in favor?